You got it, you got it.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Those kinds of impacts that it's having on a lot of people and some of the elderly, and even if they're not elderly, they can't leave town because their family is here. They're just really established here for years and years. So I hope that something can be done about the constant tax increases every single year. You know, after a while, you might see boarded up small stores in town. And then, who knows? After a while, you might even see empty houses. And that's not going to help the town pay the taxes and keep up with the services they want to give people. So anyway, well, that's all I have to say for now.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Beatty.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Next person is Karen Buckman.
Good afternoon, everybody, members of the council. Mayor Cantor, Town Manager, Mr. Hart. I'm Karen Buckman. I live at 28 Lynn Wall Drive. I happen to be a resident, but I'm not here in that capacity. I'm here as the Board President for the West Hartford Women's Corral. And the reason I'm here is we're coming to you today to ask for your support on a particular budget item. It's a tiny one, given all the things that you have to deal with here, and then enormous budget, which I did take the time to read a little bit. "I'm requesting your support for a long-term project that needs funding for our corral to complete. This will be used to purchase risers to allow our 90-singer corral to perform in town spaces. Over 15 years, our corral has grown so large that we no longer can perform in the spaces that might be available in town. The allocation in the proposed budget would help us with a matching grant of $2,000. Over the past 15 years, as I said, we've grown to a steady 90-singers. Sometimes we have 95. Most of those women come from West Hartford, not all of them. Our size makes it very difficult to perform in many of the available spaces. We've been limited to venues that can provide risers. That means schools where we have either outgrown their stages or in the high schools, which have schedule conflicts because they're so busy. They always have schedule conflicts with our concerts and their concerts because we have such a wonderful performing arts program in town. We've been relying on one church in Hartford because they can provide us with accommodations and they do have their own risers. That's Trinity Episcopal Church on Sagorni Street, but it's also on Farmington Avenue. The corral will raise the remainder of the funds for this first purchase, and we will develop a sustainable plan to sustain storage space. So we hope you can support this matching grant. Earlier this month, I sent each of you an email explaining our 15-year history because I thought it might help to introduce ourselves as a nonprofit here in town and the many ways we contribute to the cultural life of our town. Even when we perform outside of West Hartford, we are representatives of the rich cultural life that we have here and that West Hartford is known for. Today, I've brought copies of our winter newsletter, which describes recent activities, so I hope you'll look that over, and I'll pass it along when I finish speaking. This spring, we are celebrating our 15th anniversary, which is a major milestone for a small community organization that started with 14 members. We hope we have brought a lot of culturally rich programming to West Hartford. We perform in the community. We perform at venues outside the community in the Hartford area, and we also provide a large festival that includes other choruses, both high school level and women's level. That's in May. We just finished that. It's called the Festival of Women's Voices. And then we have two formal concerts of our own. We will be performing some inspiring music this spring because we are celebrating our 15th anniversary, so we hope you might join us on May 31st, 7:30 p.m., at Trinity Episcopal Church in Hartford. And in conclusion, I'd just like to thank you for your attention and thank you for your continued leadership. You help steer our town, and you're important to all of us, so thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Buckman.
Okay. Lynda DiNapoli, 214 Mohegan Drive. I'm here for the West Hartford Concerned Citizens, so that makes me a group. I have a couple of questions. There are four towns, such as Vernon, Danbury, New Haven, who have all managed not to raise taxes at all. So I'm wondering why our town can't accomplish the same thing. And I think the reason and the way to change this is at the ballot box. So those of you who are sitting here wondering why, year after year after year, the taxes go up and up and up, is because there's very little change in the makeup of the Town Council. I'm not going to minimize what they do as volunteers. I think they've done a very good job. But I'd like to say that I support the tax collector, but I do not support the issue where we are not collecting huge amounts of past due taxes. I've FOIA'd only one year. The town has owned $3.4 million. As a homeowner and an investor here, I understand people have ups and downs financially, but I think these people need to work out some kind of arrangement with the town, or the town needs to proceed, like the towns of Windsor, Hartford, and Simsbury, and move in to collect these monies. Obviously, those are all homes that are fully paid for, because on a home that is not fully paid for, the bank would pay the taxes. Regarding the number of homes for sale, I'd like to correct the good young lady who was up before. There is nowhere near 500 homes. There were less than 200, actually, and our inventory as a Realtor is much too low. We need more homes to sell. So that figure was incorrect and sounded to me like it was given by a Realtor who was in need of a new listing. So the building department and the zoning department both work very hard. I think both of those departments do not have enough employees. The reason I say that is those departments have functions wherein it allows the town to collect fines and fees for ordinances that are not followed appropriately by tax collectors. And any place where we can establish more funds should be a priority for the town. Additionally, I've asked for this before, but I'll bring it up again. When the town has openings for summer positions, I have been following this for over 12 years, they have never, that I have ever seen, advertise these positions to the residents and the residents' children, who are of an appropriate age, who could apply for these jobs for summer employment. So I'd like to see an ad put in the paper by the Essie LeBrow to advertise these jobs so that our fellow residents' children can have them. I'm not going to dig into the budget because my solution for all of this is to see new people sitting at this table and change the minority party to the majority party. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DiNapoli. Last person that signed up is Mr. Kennedy, George Kennedy. So if there's anybody else in the audience that would like to come and speak, you can stand up. I'm sorry. Mr. Kennedy, go ahead. You're up.
Oh, but you said something.
I said if there's somebody that wants to speak after Mr. Kennedy, then you can brace your hand up.
My name is George Kennedy, and I'm head of the West Hartford Taxpayer Association, such as it is. I live at 19 Waterside Lane, West Hartford, Connecticut. My family's lived there, basically owned property here since 1947 and actually lived since 1951. You keep going with the taxes, and I may be the last in my family to live there. West Hartford property taxes are just simply too high. When we add Trump's tax bill into it that limits us to $10,000 on a write-off, it really starts to hurt. Right now, for a house on that street, which is probably one of the more heavily taxed streets, I pay $21,000 a year in taxes. And seeing as the house costs $24,000 to build, it's kind of a disproportionate thing. In any event, one of the things is that the seniors are your best financial demographic, and with these taxes, you're going to be driving them out. If the demographics, as far as age, get skewed too heavily, you'll have even a worse tax problem because you'll have kids coming in who need services, families that need services. Right now, people like myself and a lot of the people sitting here, anything we get for services, we're paying for extra. The pool, the golf course, and you name it, okay? I'm so poor, I have to do my own painting. In any event, younger residents with children, they use the most services and basically drive the need for continual tax increases. And when the kids graduate, guess what they do? They leave. My son lived in Westport, just as a comparison. He's moved. He had a $1.6 million home. He paid $11,900 in taxes. I paid $21,000 for something valued at $700,000. The Town Council, the amenities that he had down there included, if you're familiar with Westport, a seaside links golf course, skating rink, nightclub, marina, and beach. We don't have anything even like that. Of course, we don't have the ocean either. But what do we get for our taxes, okay? I'm happy to be able to say one thing. I talked to the superintendent of schools on the way in here, and apparently, he's reduced, from what I could read in the budget, the 29 teachers, but that was offset by special needs, teachers that they had to hire. So at least Tom is going after the budget as best he can. And when I was talking to him, I brought up the issue that the gentleman who talked first, I completely agree with him, the things he said. But that just goes to prove that what we need is a financial advisory and management committee to assist you. And the superintendent of schools said, "That's not a bad idea. You know, most of the towns around here have this." I look around, I see one CPA sitting at this that I know of. The rest of you are either business people or lawyers. Quite frankly, I tried looking at the education budget as an example. I've got an MBA in finance. I couldn't read it. I had a couple CPAs tell me the same thing. It's crazy because of the equivalency. And I had one of the sitting members tell me, "It's my job to tell you what to cut. That's absurd. It's your job, but you need help to do it." It's not a question whether you're bad-spirited or anything like that. I just don't think you have the basic background in your own educations to do this kind of thing. And you could get tremendous assistance from a financial advisory committee. It doesn't dilute your power. It makes you look smarter. It is the way to go. And if this was a private company, you damn well would have one. I've had to defend budgets, and you have to know what you're talking about in the budget. In any event, my opinion and the opinion of many others in the budget process is simply that it gets rubber stamped, and that's probably through, "What do we cut?", you know? So it gets rubber stamped. My opinion is based upon having attended a number of your council budget meetings and the comments of retired West Hartford staff, who said they could do better. But there are some answers. The best practices that you claim you are using. The answers to a better and more transparent budget process: establish a financial advisory and management board to evaluate the budget. And to give you scenarios of what if, what if this, what if that, can we do this? The gentleman who talked first came up with two things I hadn't even thought of, and I consider myself fairly intelligent. He's absolutely correct, and that's the type of thing would be generated for you people to come to grips with. Another thing would be an automatic budget referendum. Now, I know this is frightening and threatening, but you're good-hearted people in the sense that you volunteer for this, and you're not getting paid and everything else. But the reality is, in many politicians, the first thing to do is to get re-elected, and then they worry about the rest. An automatic budget referendum would facilitate input, along with the advisory committee, and review and establish consolidate programs in schools to avoid costly redundancy, identify town functions. And I know you've done some stuff here that can be regionally combined. And finally, having all this analysis that we're suggesting and have been suggesting for years, you'll be in a position to just spend less money and keep people, nasty people like me, because I pay a good part of taxes. My road is the worst condition I've ever seen. The roads are absolutely atrocious in this town, and it's hurting you economically because if a company moves in, they have to have a staff. They have to have people. And if the houses are too expensive, they're not going to get them, number one. Number two, if the roads are terrible, what does that look like for their business? That is our town center, our crown jewel. Look at the roads. Come on, folks, we can do better than this.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Judy, you want to come up? Ms. Allen?
Judy Allen, 25 Fowler Drive. While I was here for the last public hearing, I'd like to expand upon a few things I said then. I said that changing public behavior can help reduce costs, but that doesn't leave you off the hook. Waste management is one of my pet peeves. It's expensive, and if we don't change behavior drastically, it will only increase. A recent article in The Current prompted me to sign on to a service that takes my food waste, turns it into compost, and in turn, I get some of that compost back. Food waste is a major contributor to the volume of waste and increases the town's cost for disposal. I'm not an expert, but there is technology out there to deal with this. Recycling may be better than trash. Even better is not to use the items at all. You had, I think there were seventh graders here asking you to ban single-use plastic bags, and I hope you take their request seriously. Don't delay it. Create loopholes where a consumer could buy a plastic bag at checkout. Not only should you ban the bag, you should work to ban the sale of single-use plastic bottles, plastic straws. Cut down on the volume of recycled material. Cut down on waste management costs. These are changes that you must start with. You must initiate them. Don't wait for the seventh graders to ask you to change. Going to pick on the Town Manager for a minute. In a report to the town, you praised the success of the, I'm not sure I got this right, solar Big Belly trash and recycling bins. The report compares the town results to a national average, and that can lead to false sense of security. I'm doing well. I'm doing enough. There are states and towns that are doing far better than we are, and that should be our target. Better to report that we are making progress, but we still have a long way to go. The second issue I want to address is our stormwater sewers, and I brought the rain today so that it would emphasize my comment. I'm concerned that there isn't enough money in the budget to address this in a timely manner. This will be very expensive. Residents need to know more about it. By not budgeting adequately now, you only make it more expensive over time. The MDC is a great example of that. I believe little things make a difference. I think you'd be surprised at how quickly a family can fill a pail of food scraps in just one week. Then consider the population of West Hartford, and suddenly, that adds up and is significant. Residents can reduce the volume of stormwaters in the sewers. Use rain barrels. Use strategically-placed tree planting. Environmentally sound landscaping. Don't put water into the sewer system by hosing down your driveway. Reducing the volume of stormwater isn't going to solve the problem, but it could help mitigate some of the problem until projects can be completed. If, oh, I'm done, huh?
Thirty seconds.
Oh, thirty seconds. If there are things the public is not doing on its own to bring down costs, then the town needs to take action. If residents aren't bringing their reusable bags to the store, then ban the bag. If plastic bottles continue to be in trash and littering the town, then ban plastic bottles. If residents keep hosing down their driveway, then create an ordinance to ban it. Banning things is not a popular thing to do, and food waste isn't sexy and probably won't win any votes. But I urge you to look at the budget and identify where changes in public behavior can make a difference. And going forward, I would like the council to consider ordinances that can bring about these changes. Even small changes make a difference, and I don't want my taxes to go up.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. All right. Mr. Gilmis, you...
Thank you. Jonathan Gilmis, 35 Bishop Road. I notice, and it's not a dialogue, but it looks like you have already accounted for savings for going back to weekly, bi-weekly recycling. Thank you. Don't back off on that. So that's in the budget. Thank you. Also, just a clarification. The use of fund balance is that budgeted at 9%. The wording is a little unclear in this two-page memo. It says it's not being used for operating expenditures, but assumes the fund balance is the remaining flat. So it's still 9% of the fund balance in this year's budget? Okay, thank you. A couple other things. Also, as you know, the MDC expenses going through the roof. A couple of years ago, the legislature created a town watchdog position. Yes, one of our representatives was responsible for that. Only the funding is woefully inadequate. And as a result, as you can see how these expenses are going up, this town and other towns really do need to oversee the MDC, but the legislation did not create enough funding to do that. I know many things that are going on at the MDC that we should be watching and observing that we just are not because there's not the money to pay the people to do that in that oversight role. So I would encourage you to talk to the legislators that put that forward. The session is still going on. And bump up that funding. As you can see, the increase here is very significant. Couple other minor things. In food wastes, the easiest solution that doesn't cost the town any money is for you just to do some home composting of your food waste. You just get a little thing. You put it on your kitchen counter, and you make a little composting thing in your backyard. Don't ask the town to create a whole big new expensive collection system. Many people would do this. This is what happened when recycling started. There were all these giveaways. Compost bins for backyards were subsidized. People could buy them for $3. So people who want to do the right thing and save money and keep food waste out of the waste stream, you can do it, and the town can help. We don't need to create a big new government system for that. And lastly, for the summer help ads, I couldn't help but chuckle when that came up. Town of West Hartford is no different than most towns. Summer positions are a lot of times given by word of mouth to friends and relatives and town employees. I don't know what happens here. I do know what happens in many other towns. They don't advertise these positions to the general public, and I'm not sure what happens here, but maybe that's something that can be looked into.
Thank you, Mr. -- it's Gilmis, right? Or it's Gilmis? First, I'm so sorry, because I thought that's what you said. Sorry about that. Okay. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Come on up and state your name and address for the record and...
I'm Joanne Palmer. I live at 181 Bridgewood Road here in West Hartford. I've been resident of West Hartford for 57 years, and I want to call your attention to some things that I think are worthy of your attention. One of the things is the MDC. And the fact that, as far as I know, their only meeting is an annual meeting held in Hartford at night. Now, having been assaulted in a Hartford parking lot myself, I have no desire to drive into Hartford in order to find out about the MDC business. Seeing that it's an 8.1% increase in our budget, $859,000, I want to be sure, and I have spoken with the Consumer Advocate, beginning in November of 2018, requesting a daytime meeting when seniors and women can attend in a safe environment and ask questions regarding MDC business. And there have been about six subsequent phone calls and still no meeting. And I think it's very important because I, for one, have concerns about it. Seeing that Hartford has had seven homicides in the last six months, again, I think it's desirable for West Hartford to hold a meeting or at least present the opportunity for interested citizens like me to attend and ask questions. I have one other comment, and that is on neglected properties here in West Hartford. I'm thinking of an example on the corner of Bridgewood Road in Berkshire that has, for years, been in a shambles. And when I call the zoning department, they say their hands are tied, that they don't have adequate ability and viability regulations or ordinances in order to police that property. And there are other properties in town also. I want to call your attention to that because certainly, as a responsible citizen for 57 years, and by the way, my mother was 102 a few weeks ago, I certainly intend to maintain my property, and I would like to expect that my property would be as valuable as anyone else's who is a responsible citizen and maintains their property in a satisfactory manner. So those are the things I want to call your attention to. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but those are on my mind right now.
Thank you, Ms. Palmer. Congratulations to your mother. I do just want to say, we don't go back and forth on this. We receive comments, but we do have, the Consumer Advocate is in town for a meeting. I just wanted to mention, on Thursday, May 2nd, from 2:00 to 3:00 in room 400 here...
Well, that's been promised before. When I spoke to him, when I spoke to the Consumer Advocate in November, he promised me in December there would be a meeting, and there was not.
We will follow up with you on that, but that is scheduled now. Thank you.
I would appreciate that because seeing as it's an 8.1% increase, I think that we can provide a little more accountability as citizens.
No question. Appreciate it. Thank you. All right. Now, next person, do you want to come on?
Afternoon. I'm Ed Siegel, 65 Flag Road. My wife and I have lived here about 30 years. We're very happy with West Hartford. We love living in the city. I have two grandchildren in the public school system, and we're all happy with that. So we're basically happy citizens, except for the taxes. And the only thing I would like to say, I'm retired, like all the other retired people. I'm on a fixed income. All of our friends, when we get together, we do talk about things, and taxes always come up, including the property taxes in West Hartford. We all know from the newspaper that Governor Lamont is talking about a billion-dollar-plus tax increase across the state. And I see here we're going to have spending increases of about 3.4%, and yet inflation is running maybe about 1.5%. So the statement I would like to make is it would be, I think, really uplifting for the taxpayers in the town if the Town Council would make a public statement that, in deference to the taxpayers who have seen taxes go up every year for the past decades, that there will be no tax increase this year and that we recognize the tax burden the taxpayers have. And even though we also recognize all the other needs that are legitimate needs that all the other groups have, it seems to me like the taxpayers always come last. And so I think it would really be beneficial to people in the town, including people my age who I know are thinking of moving out. Judy and I are not thinking of moving out. We love it here. To make a statement that we do respect the taxpayers, we understand the burden the taxpayers are under, and in a period of low inflation and increasing state taxes, West Hartford is going to make a public statement that you're going to do the taxpayers a favor this year and pass a budget with zero tax increases. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Siegel. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Okay, Ms. DiNapoli, and then Mr. Kennedy.
Okay. I'd like to follow up on a few things for the people in the audience. First of all, reality check. Nothing will happen with the MDC. It's a huge political organization, and we can yell and scream as much as we want, and nothing's going to happen on that front. As far as the condition of properties, this is an issue I, myself, have been very closely involved with. Mr. Publik has been very good. He's come. They've issued fines. You also call the Health Department because the Health Department has issues. You also call the Health Department, because the Health Department has issues. Where the problem comes in is, these fines are slapped on these houses, but they're very, the town, the town is very slow to move forward on collecting the fines and making these people actually responsible for their behavior. There are certain cases where people, you know, have certain issues and problems that are, make it difficult for them to, you know, satisfy the ordinance and so forth. But I think it's corporate councils' turn to start moving forward on some of these homes that have the multiplicity of fines, and a number of them are in my own neighborhood. So I would like a corporate council to make a commitment to do that. He's here today, and he's certainly free to speak.
Thank you, Mr. DiNapoli. Mr. Kennedy, do you want to finish up? That will be it, I think, unless...
George Kennedy, 19 Waterside Lane. I just wanted to follow up on something that I had forgotten in my notes, and that was some, I made the comment about how seniors cost less and are a better demographic financially to a town. There are some states that literally have a cut point, that if you have kids in school and you're below a certain age, you pay the taxes, but your taxes are frozen once you reach this age. And this would be an interesting way to control taxes for seniors and keep your demographic in balance, which it's getting out of balance. And you all sitting at that table know that if it gets too far out of balance, you're going to have some real tax problems. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Is there anybody that hasn't spoken that wants to speak? Okay, with that, we will close the public hearing. Thank you so much.